It was, it was.
You wrote it.
Um, because they, they sent out a, uh, they sent out a, uh, a rolling call. And it had, it was one of those you could respond to. It came out and it said, if you're against high taxes, press one. So people would press one and it rang on my home phone. So they wrote it in, it was all like.
They were great, yeah. They did a great job.
So I, I was getting twenty of them. It was all, um, I think that felt warm.
You're sending your vote, right?
Well, I find.
I think that's not even putting it on, it's like, uh, oh, is it my permission? And so usually what I do is.
Recording.
I'm just carrying your bike.
Wait, not if you're right away, but.
You go off and you swear to some number of two or three.
With a high five.
Inside entry garage, that's really nice.
As you can see, I'll show you. I took that picture in the front. They say this roof today, they're really raised. But this is our.
Is your roof?
I'll send it to you. Oh, wait, yes.
Living room.
Wow.
And we have the community pool down below. This is a park, it's a common park that's protected. People can walk all the way down to the, uh, lake.
Wow.
So we're pretty excited.
That's the boy.
Good project.
That house looks real nice.
Thank you.
Stop and look at this. Note the time that's going here, so I know where to find it on the video.
What is, what is PDU CMU? From the site.
Page right here.
Uh, five or six.
My glasses. I think you're five.
It says right there, here. What is, what is PDU CMU?
I don't know.
Okay, so if I ask a question, I'm not the only one.
But you can walk, you can walk down. It's, I don't know.
The Plymouth Township Planning Commission will come to order at seven oh two. The Secretary, please call and roll.
Chairperson Sobolski.
Here.
Kendra Barberina is excused. Gail Greger's here. Bob Dorshovitz.
Here.
Tim Boyd.
Here.
James Berry.
Here.
John Itzel.
Here.
And, uh, we have, um, a motion that needs to be made it, uh, made on the approval of tonight's agenda. I don't have any changes.
Mr. Chairperson, I move we approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Boyd and supported by Commissioner Itzel to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. And the approval of the minutes of, uh, July nineteenth.
I, I, I think all the corrections were made.
All right. So is there a motion, unless anyone has objections, is there approval to, um, motion to approve the minutes as submitted?
Mr. Chairman, I propose we approve the minutes of July nineteenth. Planning Commission meeting as submitted.
Support.
Move by Commissioner Boyd and supported by Commissioner Greger to approve the July nineteenth minutes as submitted. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I abstained since I was absent.
Okay. So Commissioner Berry abstains because he was absent from that meeting. Uh, now we have public comments for any non-agenda item. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak, uh, to any non-agenda items? We'd have three minutes.
Next person.
Okay.
Can you put that microphone?
I know they were doing something with it earlier before.
Oh, okay, because I know Jerry Borba said, we're gonna have it fixed tomorrow, which was a couple of weeks ago. So this is kind of more of a generic issue, I guess. We've, um, yeah, I'll do that. We've had a lot of issues and consternation over projects that have been deemed PUDs or special land use.
Excuse me, can you please state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's Dale Bernhardt.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. PUDs I can, I can understand in that it does give commissions some flexibility. And I think that PUDs can help the public. One of the problems with PUDs, I think, is that some of the wording sometime is very loose. And I, I think the criteria that we use, that's the eight that's in there, I think there's a lot of leeway with that. And I think it allows some projects to be called PUDs when in reality, personally, I don't think they should be. So I'm wondering if there's a way, if we can tighten up PUDs so that initially, if it doesn't fit the zoning, then it really can't be a PUD. Um, we can play with it a little bit to get more trees and more lighting and a little bit lower building or whatever. But slip something in that maybe shouldn't be there through the zoning, master plan or whatever. I would like this commission to maybe at least think about how we can do that. And the other is special land use. That's another one I, I think that kind of opens up Pandora's box. Is there a way that, again, if it doesn't meet zoning, there is no special land use? I can understand rezoning something and going to the public and it gives you, the public, the opportunity to vote on it and know what's happening. But just to deem something special land use, I, I think it kind of opens up a, a lot of issues. I know we don't want to fight with you guys, you don't want to fight with us. And I'm just trying to come to a way that, that maybe we can resolve a lot of these issues by our wording, wording in our zoning ordinances.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just have a question about PUDs.
Plan, Plan Unit Development.
Plan Unit Development.
Right. Sure. Okay, with that, we'll close the, uh, public comment. We have no public comment. Under, you, under unfinished business, we have applications, application twenty-four seventy-nine, Lot One of Concept Drive. And ask the, this all to, or.
Wolf, no.
Not to tell Miss Wolf to, uh, to read her report.
We look so similar.
Yeah, I agree with that.
All right, well, thanks for having us back on this Item Planning Commission. This item, Lot One of the Metro Business Park, last appeared before you in June at your June twenty-first, twenty twenty-three meeting. The development received tentative site plan approval from the Planning Commission. And this is, at this point, your fourth time around seeing this lot, since, as you know, it received site plan approval a few years back and then expired. So this is, you know, the fourth time around for this one. Since your last review, the applicant has made changes to address all of the outstanding items. There are a few that I would like to draw your attention to in this letter, though. So take a look at page, let's see which one it was. Page five. So page five, subsection ten, about building design and architecture, requires a little bit of determination from the Planning Commission. So one of them is that typically a seventy-five percent of all building facades must consist of masonry products such as brick, cut stone, split face block, or other things like that. And the remaining twenty-five percent can be cement board or some other type of non-masonry material. Uh, but the breakdown of the proposed building is indicated at ninety-eight percent painted CMU. We recommend that the applicant incorporate colored burnished blocks and brick instead, especially as this is on a corner lot. But that is up to the Planning Commission to determine the ultimate composition of the building exterior. The other one is that we recommend the Planning Commission review the provided elevations and renderings, just so you can actually get an idea of what that would look like. And that was provided to you in your packet. Ultimately, the Planning Commission is responsible for any deviations from the seventy-five percent masonry requirement. Ultimately, though, based on our findings, we recommend that the Planning Commission grant final site plan approval for Lot One of the Metro Business Park, PC number two four seven nine, provided that the architectural design is found satisfactory by the Planning Commission and subject to the following conditions: Final engineering approval and payment in lieu for the Concept Drive sidewalk. Additionally, I also have the Plymouth Township Fire Department's assessment of the site in front of me, and they found that there were no deficiencies with the plans submitted.
They have a question, is the material that they're using or proposing to use on their building different than what was permitted for Roblesville on Hagerty?
No, it's roughly the same. Yeah, it's pretty common for most industrial buildings, it's that composite panel stuff. So it's normal.
Your thought was, because this is a corner building, that we should pay a little more attention to the exterior?
Yeah, just your thoughts and considerations on it.
What does the acronym CMU actually mean?
It's, I always forget, hold on, let me look it up for you. Concrete Masonry Unit. Can you say that again?
Everybody knows that.
Yeah, Concrete Masonry Unit. So kind of like a concrete slab instead of an actual, you know, piece of masonry.
A tilt top.
Yeah. Not baked in the same way a brick would be, for example.
And our engineering report?
Today afternoon, um, we, we only offer, um, just a couple of comments, uh, for site plan at this time. Um, one of them being, uh, the plans indicate a paved parking area. And planned landscaping within the twelve-foot private easement limits for DTE. Uh, marking the plans as lever three one three three two, page three three two, uh, including proposed trees within the fifteen-foot private easement for tree trimming, uh, lever three one three three two, and page three three two, adjusted to the DT easement. It is noted, um, from the response letter that these records will be provided. But, uh, we want to know that if the easements indicate that the proposed work, uh, is not allowed within the easements, uh, the existing easements, uh, reconfiguration to the parking lot and landscape might expire. Um, additionally, to the truck turning lane, we would like them to revise the fire truck path to avoid showing the wheel path jumping the proposed curb and water. Um, as for the utilities, we have no concerns. Everything can be addressed at the engineering stage. We would just like to know that, um, for the stormwater, um, a current review and approval from Wayne County DPS will be required to confirm that not onsite a storm detention or pre-treatment prior to the charting to the regional detention basin will be required. And based on the comments stated in our site plan review letter, we recommend approval of the final site plan, with all additional comments being addressed in the engineering review stage.
Thank you. And the applicant is here?
Yes.
Excuse me, did you have any comments?
Yes, so since the, um, last version of the materials and, um, facades, I believe, were submitted, we made some updates to address the, um, uh, too much CMU, I guess, for lack of a better term. Um, I should have printed out more of these, but essentially, we converted the majority of the side here to integrally colored, or painted brick block.
Can you, can you pass that? Just, we'll pass it along, so you can get a better look.
And if you want to pass that as well.
Well, this is the south elevation.
Yes.
So what, uh, are the dark panels, they look like panels, that's the masonry portion that you said you painted, or?
It should be all masonry.
Oh, it's all masonry.
There's only two percent metal on the whole of the expect, exterior composite materials, I should say, that aren't brick or masonry.
Oh, two percent, you said?
Are not brick or masonry.
Are not brick or, okay.
Is it only the south elevation that has the, uh, really colored split face concrete block, or is it all the way around?
I would have to see that sheet back that I.
Oh, you want to see this back?
It should be, it should be consistent all the way around, except for any differences in doors and windows from north to south to east to west.
Yeah, the answer to that is yes, it is. Good answer.
We may have asked this question already, but is this a spec building, or do you have a tenant in mind already?
So, yes, this building is speculative. If you recall, Lot fourteen, which I've been here every month for the past few months, um, that building, there is a, uh, tenant that I cannot disclose that is close to being.
You've identified a tenant.
Yeah, we're very close to signing a lease with them.
If we were to, uh, be granted approval, how long would it take to build out?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Within approval, how long would it take to build?
With a signed lease and to move forward?
Right.
Here, or on Lot fourteen?
This one right here.
Um, if we were to receive approval today, um, based on our Lot fourteen timeline, I would say eighteen months to be able to deliver a shell-conditioned building. You don't want them.
Any comments from the commission on the elevations and the building material?
My take is that the elevations are a significant improvement, and I think they're certainly representative of other buildings in that park, business park.
Comments, any concerns?
I thought the elevation looked, uh, cleaner than I thought it was gonna look professionally. I like the color contrast, too.
Yeah. Breaks up the building a bit. Motion should include that, um, the commission finds the building materials and the elevation, the look, the, the design of the elevation, uh, is acceptable. I want to say the motion, but. Okay. Anyone up here?
I'd be happy to make the motion.
Okay.
Although, you know, this is a little new for me, I want to make sure I cover all the, uh, points I need to cover, so I, I.
You can always say, as a, a quick way to do it, if you're in agreement, is, uh, that you agree with the, uh, points made in the planner and engineering report, and then something about the elevations, because that was called out for us.
Okay. Okay, so I, uh, would make a motion regarding Lot One of the Metro Business Park at four one three three six Concept Drive, Planning Commission number twenty-four seventy-nine. I move that we adopt the recommendations of both McKenna and the engineering report. In particular, I move that the elevations provided by the property owner have been reviewed by the commission and meet with our approval, that it's a significant improvement from the previous plans that were submitted, and that based upon the recommendations made by both McKenna and Spalding and Decker, I move that we adopt, uh.
Go ahead, finally.
That we, that we adopt and grant application, Planning Commission number twenty-four seventy-nine.
Second. Well done.
Should we amend the, uh, resolution to specify that it will include the, um, colored split face concrete block in lieu of CMU? So that that's specifically noted?
Yeah, says, yes. I would move for that amendment as well.
Friendly amendment?
Yes.
Is that what you call it, right?
All right. Uh, all in favor of, of, uh, motion made on application twenty-four seventy-nine, subject to, uh, comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Well, congratulations, good luck to you and your investment in our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we receive and file the monthly planning report. I do have a couple of comments or questions on this. So I did, um, have a, this, a brief discussion with Laura about the Purcell site that's going up, uh, before the ZBA. So my understanding from her is that if that, um, land split is approved by the ZBA, that nullifies the, uh, the cluster housing option.
Yes, that is correct. The applicant would then just move forward with it like any other single-family development. Just two separate houses on their own, you know, no cluster housing, no special private road, none of that.
So the money, um, that was going to be used for historical purposes and the historical marker sign is no longer required.
That is correct.
Okay, I just want to pass that on to the historical commission.
So they're doing a lot split and they're gonna do one house, is that what's?
Well, one house on each.
Each one? Then they're gonna knock down the old existing house, right?
Yeah, if they're granted the lot split, that's my understanding. Although if, if they intend to retain the existing house and I misspoke, I apologize.
Yeah, Laura told me that, um, they were gonna sell the house as is.
Oh, they might do that, sure.
But anybody can buy it and tear it up.
It's supposed to be eight houses, it's, you know, uh, it's.
So it would, it would result in three total houses if they keep existing house up?
Existing house plus another house, so.
So they split the lot, sell the half if they want to. I mean, if they're granted, if they're granted that. They're with one existing house on one lot, no house on the other lot.
Well, a future built house.
Right, but whoever buys the one with the existing house on it can do whatever they want.
Yeah, just like any other.
Just like any other property, okay.
So why aren't they doing the cluster housing?
I don't exactly know. It might come down to finances, but I'm not privy to that information, so.
For all that.
I know.
Questions on any other items in the monthly?
Uh, there was one here, I'm trying to find it to make sure I got it right, I should have marked it when I reviewed it.
Would the, uh, resemble a front property and a back property, or is there a way to do something other than that?
So the way the township organizes its land division regulations today, there are strict regulations that keep most property owners from splitting off the back of their lot. And that's because you have to guarantee that there's a way to access an isolated lot with either an easement or a road or utilities or things like that. When someone is just doing two homes, you know, they're a private citizen, they're just doing a private driveway, there are some instances where you can split off the back of your property. But in most cases, um, our regulations are written in a way that it requires you to split it so that everyone has primary road frontage, so. But this lot, I haven't looked at the application yet because it hasn't passed the ZBA, so.
So it's likely the result of the split would be, uh, another lot in front of the existing home?
I do not know. We would have to look after the ZBA finishes.
They're, the ZBA materials have been filed, I believe. And it does include a, um, a plot plan that shows what they're proposing to do.
Okay.
And it would answer some of these questions, I think, that people have.
Yeah, so.
Probably also warrants a closer look.
Yeah, and I should specify, our department isn't involved in the ZBA's deliberations. We do process lot splits when they come in. So, you know, we don't necessarily contribute to the assembly of a ZBA packet and things like that.
I have a question, uh, on the Phoenix Mill. I think Laura was set to do a site inspection about a month ago, with the topic being, uh, one of the big topics being landscaping. Do you know if that happened?
I believe she did do the site inspection. The landscape report is not fully prepared yet. It takes her a while to type up all the notes for a landscape report.
So that's what, uh, I was gonna ask that question myself. So when it says final stamp under review, that's where Laura will be evaluating it?
Mm-hmm, correct.
Okay, and then what about the Buddy's Starbucks site?
The Buddy's Starbucks.
Remember the landscaping there?
Uh, yes.
I don't even see it listed, maybe I missed it.
That's okay, so usually we don't list, you know, all the final landscape reviews in this chart for you because there's just so many of them. It would really clutter it up, but it is on the list.
Okay.
You know, every spring, I would say, we get, I don't know, twenty or maybe thirty landscape reviews every single year. So we try not to bother you with all of them.
Danny, when you do the Starbucks in Buddy's review, make sure to look at the sign, um, in front, because I don't think it currently, um, meets the requirements of what we approved previously.
Okay, yeah, I'll make a note of it.
Any other comments, concerns, questions? Okay, and we'll just receive and file the report. And planners update, uh, discussion, and this is the material you handed out to us just before the meeting?
Yes, I did. So what's before you is the goals and objectives section from the previous parks and recreation master plan. So as a township, we do not have a dedicated Parks and Recreation Board. Instead, we have, I would say, two boards that are invested in the development of parks. One of them is the Planning Commission and the other one is the Environmental Leadership Commission. So as such, we like to keep both of these boards updated as to what's going on with the park and recreation plan. And like I said, communities that have a dedicated Parks and Recreation Board, this is their prerogative. But in this case, we're kind of wrapping in everyone who might be interested. So first, I wanted to update you on the number of surveys that we received. As of August fifteenth, we have gotten back seven hundred and forty-two surveys from the community, which accounts to roughly two percent of the Plymouth Township population, which is pretty good for an online survey, I will say. Uh, so the other thing that we wanted to put before you is just the copy and the goals of, the copy of the goals and objectives so that you can review them over the next month before you come back. And what we're really looking for your feedback on is, you know, are these goals and objectives still in alignment? Are there any ones that need little tweaks or adjustments? And, um, you know, ultimately, the. And, you know, ultimately, the, the call on this is up to the township, you know, when they adopt it, since there is no formal park and recreation board, but we would still love to get your feedback. And these goals and objectives are developed in tandem with the city of Plymouth. So whatever ones we create will then be combined and resolved with the city's goals and objectives to make sure that they all align. So right now, we're really moving forward with the same goals and objectives as last time, but that's why I brought this for you today. So we don't have to go through it line by line. I really just wanted to give you a copy of it so that you can take it home, think about it, churn on it, go to whatever park is closest to your house, and enjoy it maybe. And, yeah, take a little look.
Can you tell us, are there any major changes proposed in this new plan compared to the existing plan?
You mean in the park network?
Right, right.
Well, the, the biggest one is the park next to the golf course, which is called.
The Golf View.
Yes, Golf View Park is the biggest major change since last time. The township owns some natural land that's, you know, not really parks, not park accessible. It's the same as last time, but right now, that's the biggest change. And then the city of Plymouth is also, you know, doing their own thing with their park system, updating, doing more pocket parks, those sorts of things. But that's really outside of our jurisdiction, so we just rolled it.
And they're actually doing a scientific survey, right?
Yes, and they are doing a survey about way more topics than just parks. So their survey covers land use, marijuana, like everything under the sun is encompassed in their survey. And, you know, they chose to go with a scientific survey. The township chose not to go with a scientific survey in part because of the cost, given the number of people that live in the township. That would have been $15,000 based on our population, and that's just not something in the budget right now.
So how, what communication lines are open between the township and the city when it comes to parks and recreation?
Yeah, absolutely. So, you know, we don't have a quote-unquote parks and recreation department. So Sarah Weisell and Bobby Pomel, who's our senior services coordinator, are the main two that communicate directly with the city to coordinate parks and recreation events, bookings, everything like that. In terms of the park and recreation plan, though, the city also has their own consultant that they've hired. So our department in our office hours works directly with them to update the park and recreation plan.
Other questions?
Did anything surprise you?
Out of the survey results, whether or not dogs should be allowed, the most controversial topic of all time. So I think you all expect that.
It is.
Yep, and I, I think Plymouth Township is the only community I have ever worked in that does not allow dogs on leash in the parks. So just to hear all the feedback from both sides, I was like, all right, okay, this is how this is. But that was the only one that was really surprising to me.
More people want dogs than not want dogs?
Well, when the survey was at 300-something, pro-dog was winning. But I have to check back in to see what the balance is.
Stop the dogs.
It's not like the survey is going to dictate whether or not we allow dogs, but. Yeah, so something to.
I'm interested what people think about it, though.
Mm-hmm, and we did, at the, the open house, we did have a gentleman ask if there have been any studies about the impacts of allowing dogs. Again, this is on leash, not off-leash, in the parks. And the answer to that is just no, because most other communities allow it. So there's no scientific, you know, research into what that would do in Plymouth Township.
And who would do a study like that anyway?
Maybe Plymouth Township.
Somebody that's got money to burn. Yeah.
But, yeah, so other than the dogs, pretty much everyone is in support of better maintenance, you know, more tree plantings, the things that make our parks more beautiful, and also adding a greater diversity of amenities. So that's things like outdoor fitness equipment, pickleball courts, the stuff to make it a more well-rounded facility. But, yeah, so any other questions about the park and recreation plan right now?
No, thanks for the summary and the information that we can chew on over the next month.
Yeah, and also, if you haven't completed the survey yet, please complete one online or go upstairs and grab a paper copy from the community development counter and you can return it right to the box up there.
When does that close?
Gosh, I don't know.
I think it's September 1st.
September 1st?
Soon, yeah, soon. But, yeah, so there's plenty of paper or digital, whatever you prefer. And take some home if you want.
Okay. Moving on to commissioner comments.
I had one. This is probably new news to most of you. Bob is aware of this, Dennis is. The last meeting, we voted in favor of the solar energy systems proposal, but we specifically excluded principal use ground-mounted residential solar energy systems from the approval. And remember, we had a long discussion on that. When it then came to the board for approval, the meeting packet omitted the fact that we had excluded principal use ground-mounted residential solar energy systems. Now, I just happen to, I, I always try to read the meeting packet before the meeting. And so the afternoon of the meeting, I, I read it and noticed that that was missing. So I notified Bob and Laura, and fortunately, Laura got it changed before the meeting and corrected. And the board approved the proposal as we had originally voted for it. But from a process point of view, that's a pretty big breakdown. And I was just curious to know if there was any feedback from the planning department or anybody who prepared the final meeting deck for the township board as to why that key piece was omitted.
Sure, so that was, first of all, not omitted intentionally in any way. The motion for the solar ordinance was so long and disjointed that we simply couldn't exactly figure out what the motion was supposed to be. Ultimately, the motion that was actually passed by the planning commission was only to omit principal ground-mounted solar, but your intention was to omit principal and accessory ground-mounted solar. So the motion itself was, you know, incomplete after it had been created. I think the motion took like six minutes from start to finish just to get together. So again, it was not intentional. We were just trying to sort through the language of the motion and figure out exactly what had happened. And we were happy to correct it once you noticed that it was not exactly what you intended. But my recommendation in the future is if you start a, a motion and it's getting out of hand and you feel like you're losing track of it, you can always just, you know, table or vote down that motion and start a new one.
Or withdraw it.
Yeah, or withdraw it, just to make it a little more concise. So if you ever feel like you're getting too far into the, the weeds of a motion, it's totally okay to back, back out and restate that motion a second time. So that's just my advice for what happened with the solar ordinance. But it was not intentional in any way.
Thank you.
I think it would have helped had the commission been given a draft of it, you know, at least a month earlier, just like you've given us an update on the parks and recreation. Because to give us less than a week to go through it and try to make sense of it, sometimes you have to read it two or three times, and not even notify that this was underway, you know, in the background. The individual that gave the presentation certainly gave a good presentation, but it was just such a shortage of time that I think anyone who wanted to make a motion at that time found it difficult to, you know, kind of wrap their heads around it, given the shortness of time to really properly digest it.
Yeah, and going forward, we're going to start having a study session for every, you know, major ordinance amendment before you folks have to vote on it. So, you know, with, for example, the parking one, we know that's already come before you a few times, but going forward into the future, we'll make sure you always have a chance to see it before you are presented with it. And keep in mind, you can always, you can always, you know, have a public hearing for a zoning ordinance and then table it till the next month if you want to. That's perfectly acceptable if you don't feel confident making a motion on it at that time.
Commissioner Edso, you have any comments?
No.
No, I'm good. Okay. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn the meeting. Commissioner Boyd, Boyd supported.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, that's right. Okay, we have a motion to adjourn the meeting at 7:37. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.